...to do things and I respect that and I'll give you as much latitude as I can. But my suggestion is that we stick to the issue and not the other outliers that have been mentioned. This is a matter of whether or not to decide to use a contract provider for employment or not. And the ancillary issues are not something I think that we need to be discussing. So with that being said, Dr. McCary, you have questions?
You're going to start with your Appleton question.
Would you prefer me to start with someone else? I could start with Ms. Jen.
No, that's not good. Really, what I have is just a comment that at our first meeting with Appleton, they gave us a packet and at the end of that packet, there was a list of people, school systems that they were using and it was not as extensive as the one that's in the back of this packet. And so at AASB Summer Conference, I had the opportunity to go around and try and locate some of the school systems board members there and just have a one-on-one conversation with them about their use of Appleton, how they were using them, if they were happy with the services there. It's something, it's a process that I prefer to use as opposed to picking up the telephone because I can do one-on-one. And I was able to talk with two different school systems. I talked with Birmingham City and Jefferson County and they were both very pleased with what they're using them for. They've used them for years now. And I asked if they are still using them for the same positions that they were using them initially. They started off with using them as subs and they've grown from there. So they are happy with the services. So I simply wanted to share that information.
All right, thank you. Ms. Jen.
I did notice, I was looking over the health insurance form. So the health insurance that would be provided, it says it does not qualify as minimum essential coverage. So that would mean if an employee took the health packet out, they would have to have some kind of coverage elsewhere, is that correct?
What was the concern?
Yes, that is correct.
So they would have to have something else if it could not be... What concerned me, just with us being a small town and there's nothing you guys can do about this, it's just that I know we have a lot of people that come to us that take jobs as aides or lunchroom workers or other places. And I know a lot of them may do the job because of health insurance. So their family can have that.
Can you point out where you're talking about?
Right here. So that's just a concern, coming from a small town, being, working with these people, as I've worked with them for many years, and knowing that that's a tough part. And that, like I said, is nothing that you guys can do. Think about that, it's just a situation that we're even in a small town. So that kind of concerned me.
And that is where we talked from the beginning, that's where the savings comes basically, in essence. And it wouldn't apply as much like to our retired employees taking advantage of it, but it would to those who are not in that category.
Yeah, I do think, and this is just a comment, like what you were saying, I do think one thing for us to consider is I do think we get people coming to take these positions that are good people from good families that maybe if they weren't getting that healthcare coverage, given that the salary is not very large, they might just say, I'm not going to do this, I'll go somewhere else where I can get some issues. So I'm just saying that's something to think about. Now, I wouldn't mind giving it a try to use with our subs and see how that kind of works. But that was just the main thing that jumped out at me right there, was just that, I'm sure.
Remember that the sub piece was part of the initial reason we talked to them, that would cost our system money.
Oh, so we decided not to do that.
Well, it's not that we've decided not to do it, but as we talked with them about all of the different services they provide, I think I mentioned to y'all in our original meeting, we started the conversation with subs and realized immediately, oh wow, this would cost us money to do this and while there might be some other benefits, we are not in a position where we can spend extra money on anything. And so though, as the conversation continued and we realized all of the services they provided and as we got deeper into that, we said that perhaps we could look at that option later, but it would have to be after we were saving enough money to at least cover the cost of that.
I do remember that. Okay, at the moment, that's all I can think of.
All right, I'll give an opportunity to come back. We agree, I see anything. Ms. Thompson?
I am a little unclear on the contract. Is it a one-time contract or is it a year-to-year renewable contract?
It's a one-time contract. I did ask, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Brown, but I did ask if they're working with any systems that renew the contract annually and they are not. However, he did, one of the things y'all expressed, a couple of you have expressed is like if there were a change in superintendent's or anything like that, you know, a major reset in terms of, you know, who's listed on his contract. He said at any point in time, there could be a reset, just as if, even if there weren't a change in that role. But it is, it's kind of open-ended in that regard in terms of a timeline, which is where part of the flexibility comes into.
And I understand the, you're wanting the flexibility, but being such a new idea. I personally would like to see a limited contract where we're basically outlining the positions we would be using them for and then maybe adding as we kind of gain some ground and trust and not, you know, just with our employees. Because it's going to be a change for everybody, but specifically, I'm thinking of how it was originally presented to us as for federal jobs, like Title I positions that come out later in the, we kind of get our guidelines later in the year, the school year. And maybe that's how we could start this and move forward if it works out or end it. Because we always have that 90-day flexibility to end the contract. It's just an idea and it's just kind of a compromise maybe for this in particular year because we did actually post some of the positions that we were considering using before, right?
Yeah, the positions that I presented included those Title I positions, which those have not been filled yet because of the timeline with the title dollars. But the others that were mentioned were, there were some instructional assistant positions, those had to be posted, we couldn't wait once this got delayed. And then a bus aid position and that has been posted. And I think that was it for the initial proposal. The reason those were listed in terms of, not for the contract, but they were listed as what we'd like to kind of start with and try, because those were the vacant positions of the positions that we would save money and we thought it would be a good fit after examining it, you know, with those directors and so forth. But those are not the same positions that are vacant now. The only thing that's still vacant or not in the process of being filled are the Title I positions, so.
And traditionally, we have used retired employees and who would not be...
They've been, and it's worked out very well from my understanding and everybody, it's a win-win situation. We did have a retired employee interested in the bus aid position. That was kind of one of the things, you know, we were thinking that would be an option in that role, but we've had to post that position and move forward to make sure we have it filled when school starts. I would not be able, just to be...
Does she have any other questions?
Can I finish answering one question she had? I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
I answered her question.
Okay, well, I'll be right back.
You have any other questions?
Mine are just, you know, more specific, you know, outlining the positions that we're actually going to be using them for on a yearly basis, maybe every once at this time of year, kind of give us an idea, hey, what are we planning to use Appleton for this year? And just, you know, outline it to us as Dr. Spady did. And especially when she knows when there's openings and never to, never to get rid of people and replace their contract employees. I mean, that's, we want to, if we want to do this, do it through attrition or through genuine knowledge of an employee, like through retirement. And we know that that's a fantastic employee. We know she's a wonderful teacher or he is a wonderful teacher. So of course we wouldn't hesitate to use that person as a contract position. And you do have that flexibility to use who you want.
Correct. That's always been the case and we'd never propose anything that wasn't from attrition or vacant positions. I was going to answer your other question. There's no way I would be able to provide the board with a list of positions that would be, we'd use it with for the year because, you know...
Could you do it on a quarterly basis?
Well, I don't know, especially during the school year, I don't know what's going to be vacant. Now, I could tell you if, these are the categories of positions that we would even consider the possibility for if we had a vacancy, but I don't know when the vacancies are. I mean, just today, we've had a vacancy that I didn't know first thing this morning and that's going to happen throughout the year, so I couldn't give you a projection for the year. Other than to say, these are the only categories of employees that we would even consider doing this with for now.
And could that be the contract or is that... I don't know anything about contracts.
It is, it's included. Have you ever asked any other questions to him?
Or if anyone who can answer a contract question.
I'd gesture to him to answer the question.
Okay. Can specific positions be added to the contract?
Yes, at any time, the position categories will be listed. And just because they're listed does not mean that we will staff them. We only staff them when the board sends us specific paperwork indicating that they're ready for us to do it for us. The board remains in complete control the entire life.
Well, the board is not the one that's going to be sending that to you, it's going to be the superintendent. So how are we going to be aware of what?
This is how this is set up with all of the other school systems. If, you know, if the board is uncomfortable with me handling that, then we would probably just abandon this altogether. It would be my fault. I mean, that would be my fault if that's what kind of the feeling of the board is. Because you kind of mess up part of the, as I said, there are two reasons to do this and it would eliminate the second reason for doing it. So.
So would the board still approve the people who were sent to us from your company? Or would they just go straight to the school? You would hire them and say, you're in this position, you go to...
So that would be decided internally. We would supply you with individuals and either someone on the board at the current time or committee or the principals of the building that they're not going to take. That would be on each side.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, go ahead.
How, just broadly, how do other school systems handle this? Do you understand this little concern? I mean, it's just, it's taken away flexibility from the superintendent, but it's also taken away some of our responsibility for board members to make sure that we're aware of what positions at least we need to handle. In your experience, how has that been handled with other boards?
So we fill out the exhibit A in the agreement on the front end and it says that these are positions that could never be employed and you can modify that at any time and sign off on it. From there, we have a requisition form. The requisition form is filled out, sent to us. Only when we receive that requisition form with proper signatures will we begin to start recruiting to place any of those positions. And so districts do it differently internally. Some have a process where once a position is open and they want to outsource it through Appleton, they fill out that form, they present it to their team, their colleagues at the central office, board members, make sure everyone's on board and then they send that form. Only until we receive that form though, will we go to work. So it's not something where we can come in and say, well, this position's on the contract, we have a right to... You're still in complete control the entire way through with each individual job we make.
All right, my comment is now go around the table again, let anybody follow up on
We need to save some money, okay? If we can save some money and not cut bodily, then we need to do that. The legislative raise that everyone, most everyone is getting is a good example. The raise is not fully funded, going to end up costing, if I remember right, our system about fifty-seven thousand dollars. All right? Fifty-seven thousand dollars out of our general fund that, you know, is not placed in form. So it sounds good when they say you get a raise, although it may be going to pay you. You know, if it's not fully funded, then it comes out of the local pocket. So in theory, you got this, you know, circle of employees, all of which will get a raise, but one, because it's your job because our teacher unit is roughly fifty thousand dollars. Now, we're trying to do everything we can to keep things like that happening. I'm not saying somebody's going to lose their job because of the work around them, but there are very, very minute opportunities and flexibilities in our budgets to continue to move and spend money. In my opinion, if we could do this without harming quality in any way and without laying anybody off or anything, only through attrition, we could fill these spots in our mouth. That would basically come up to forty-five, fifty thousand dollars worth of savings. Then we'd at least come awash for the year on this particular issue of having to come up with an extra fifty grand to keep our budget full. So in that position, you know, I think it sounds like a good thing. I would prefer to see it done on a limited trial basis. And, you know, to say we can't specify the positions, I'm not sure everybody understands because as the Appleton representative stated, it's actually a part of the contract that you state the positions that are going to be in progress, are their schedule, so is the salary, the salary is part of their schedule. So that's sure, that's something that we can work through. The only way, I think, that anybody has even mentioned doing this, is through the spots that are already vacant. I've met several people that stop at the gas stations and things and say, here we're going, lose your job. Well, I don't know, you know, nobody's been talking about that. And that's how things, that's just rumors, you know? Things get started, things grow out of hand. That's just part of it. So don't intend on anybody losing their job on the payroll to end up becoming an Appleton employee. However, if you retire, as some people have already said, they might be able to become re-employed basically because we need good help and when good people retire, you know, we're sometimes got bored to feel. You can receive your RSA benefits and pick up an extra paycheck on the side because you get to go back to work, doing the same thing you did for a contract service as opposed to the school board where you have to be careful of your wages so as not to violate your RSA agreements with your retirement. Some things that are a little concerning that we run into here is the fringe benefits, the healthcare. As Ms. Jen pointed out, I miss that, is this does not meet affordable healthcare economic requirements, so therefore whoever is an employee might not seem well, might be in a situation where you could be looking at tempting. Now, if you're a retired employee, you're getting your benefits. That's one of the reasons you're able to do this, so, you know, it's not an issue. For the board members looking at the options, I would want to point out that you're usually used to looking at monthly or in some cases, I don't know if I would check if you're used to it or not, but I think it's monthly, you're used to looking at your healthcare on a monthly or annual basis. You do need to notice that, excuse me, these benefits are a weekly quarter. So if you're considering to be monthly, it would be four times what you're looking at on recessive form plan C. The other thing I don't see is it gives deductibles on dental and I believe it gives deductibles on vision, but I didn't see the deductible amount regarding the medical benefits. The, the way I'm visioning this, working with all the issues that surround it, would be, as I said, on a limited basis for basically a year tried. And I'm talking about a handful of positions that are already vacant. If the flexibility is not there for the superintendent to do it that way, she may not wish to do that. But I do think there would be some cost savings there and I do think that would be beneficial to us. I don't see how the flexibility could be any more difficult to deal with than it would be now. I would think it would be either the same or easier. So if the flexibility was the same and still saving money, I think that would be a good idea. Some of the vacancies that we had, and I don't remember this number, around this three in my head, it was almost a paper up, probably a month or longer ago when we had the meeting about it. And for some reason, I want to say, the positions that we have would come in at about forty-five thousand dollars of savings for that student. I may be wrong, I'm not sure. If that's the case, then we have to fill that void, that we're going to have to pull out of the general fund and national pay rates. That being said, I'm going to go around the table one more time. I'm going to start with Dr. Spady, allow her to answer anything that she's so far from the board members, and then I'll look back with Dr. McCary. I'll tell you what, let's just start with Dr. McCary and come around again, will it? Dr. Spady, have a shot to answer those questions, I wish I could if you have any more.
Yeah, I need to know if I was going to ask you more or not, but just let me go back to initially when we talked about this, Dr. Spady, there were four positions that we were looking at and some of those were already re-advertised.
Those were the four that were vacant at the time that were within the list of what would save us money or make sense.
So if we vote at our next board meeting and approve this contract, are we going to use those same positions or is it going to be different ones or are we not even going to put any on there at this time?
Part of what we would have to do at this point is to basically look at, I don't know what positions are going to be vacant throughout the year. I have no way of knowing that. So those were the ones that were vacant at the time. So what we would have to do is look at, just list basically all of the positions that might become a vacant, that could, could be a possibility to fill with an Appleton employee. That's the best I could do. I can't tell you what positions would be vacant throughout the year. I have no way to know that. So that wouldn't be to say though, that just because there was a vacancy there, that we would feel like that was the right thing to do. We would look at each position, each vacant position on a case-by-case basis. We could, we, one of the positions we had talked about was a nursing position, but we had another nursing position that had just been posted because we felt like it was important for us to handle that a different way. So just to say, if something's on the list doesn't mean we would use an Appleton employee, it would just be the comprehensive list of anything that we might consider if a position became vacant. That's about the best I could do.
So then in July, if something is still open from what's been advertised, could it be transferred over to Appleton for dental to tail?
Potentially, potentially, if the board, if I still decide to go forward with this recommendation and the board were to approve it, at that point in time, we'd just have to look and see what happens next. I mean, things are happening on a daily basis right now with our employees, so, and again, we would look at each position on a case-by-case basis, but is it possible? Yes, I guess it's possible.
All right, thank you. That's it.
Ms. Jen.
If, Dr. Spady, would we as a board, like we all sit down and decide which available vacant jobs we would consider using Appleton for?
If the board felt like they wanted to do that, I probably won't bring the proposal. That would be a lot of extra, frankly, a lot of additional communication on top of what we're already doing and things are happening, just right now, things are happening so quickly with physicians. I'm not sure, I don't know. So yes, we could do that. Would I propose that we do that? Maybe or maybe not, I'd have to think about that. But that would mean to me, every time we have a vacancy, convening and/or getting with all of you or waiting for a month potentially to go by before we could have that conversation, depending on when it happens. And so that might be more laborious than I'd be willing to take on. I'm not sure, I'd have to think about the logistics of that. That's all.
You know, just a fresh question I want to ask. But that's what we're doing now, I mean, so I want to kind of figure out, is it more difficult? Because that's what we're doing now. The next meeting comes up, we address the job issue.
Now, you're proposing, you're approving or not approving recommendations I made for employment. I think what she's asking is, could the board be involved in deciding, hey, we have this vacant position, do we want to fill it with an Appleton employee or do we want to post the job? So that would be another layer. Like right now, if we have a vacancy, once that becomes official, we post the job. Did I miss, did I understand your question? Yes.
I guess I just didn't, I mean, wanted to get out of hand where there were positions being filled that maybe we weren't aware. We were using Appleton for those positions if we came...
Yeah, if we were to do something like this, I've been accused of over-informing this board and I'm sure that this would definitely be no different, especially as much communication as we have had about this issue, especially in the beginning, to keep you informed of how things are going, but, and we could do that, however, you know, too much or too little information, just for me to gauge that from you guys.
Crystal, if we got a meeting coming up and there's a vacancy arises, you would normally just post that vacancy and then it would be presented at work session if you're going up some personnel, it matters on the agenda, and then we would vote on that for the next meeting.
It would be on the board agenda Friday.
So if Appleton was contracted and that happened and then you posted the job and then you come to the board and says, we had this vacancy at work session, but what I'd like to do is to the posting that job, in exchange of hiring on that posting to the director channels, I would like to fill that with an Appleton employee. And then at that point, it would be kind of your recommendation to fill that spot with an Appleton employee and then we would vote on that.
You could do it that way and you correct me if I'm wrong. I think the way the other school systems are doing it or utilizing Appleton are approving this initial contract at the board level and then the, you know, those kinds of things that you just mentioned are just handled back and forth between whether it's superintendent or the Department of Human Resources in the school system or, you know, whoever the contact person is and it's just handled that way. I think in talking with superintendents, I think some of them do give periodic reports to their board just so they know kind of, you know, how much money, kind of like you have a summary of what that one school system had. have a summary of what that one school system had, things like that, but I guess it's at the discretion of what the board wants and what the superintendent wants, but I don't think, you correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think there's a scenario out there like you just described.
What I can see is saying, okay, position X, we're going to do that, and then once position X rolls open, you know, say that person quit, the first person on that job quit, and then you replaced them. I don't see you having to come back to the board for that, other than just give a report, hey, this person quit, and I replaced him with this one. But as far as the initial opening of the position and making it an Appleton position, you know, that's, that's what I'm talking about.
The only downside to that, it would be the timing of it. If, if the timing were right before a work session, or I guess it would have to be a board meeting if it required board approval, I mean, theoretically, you could have a whole month or more pass before you could get that formal approval, so that would just be, just like it is now, there's a delay. That's one thing that has been a benefit, is to have the flexibility to make adjustments.
So once the position's approved, though, you would have the flexibility, you just wouldn't have it prior to that position being approved, which is the same way we do it now. So the flexibility would come a little bit later possibly, but you still have the financial savings, and past that initial point, you still have flexibility.
It would actually delay, so right now, if someone notifies us that we have a vacancy, we often post that position that very day so, so that we can move on it, and especially at certain times of the year, it's more critical. So, so what would happen in that case is, let's, let's say that we waited and that the next board meeting waited for the board to approve whether or not we use an Appleton employee, let's say the board said no, which I'm assuming the only reason you would have that is so the board has that discretion to say yes or no. Well, then that would have just delayed potentially a month of time that you would have already had the job posted and even had a recommendation to the board, so you'd be looking at then another month.
But you could post it, you don't need the board's approval to post it, so when the job comes available, you could post it at that point.
We wouldn't post it, though, if we were using an Appleton employee, we would just notify them that we need an employee for that position.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, I don't, I don't understand the difference at the point that the vacancy initially becomes available, vacancy for position X becomes available. Okay, post it, bring it to the board at the next work session, in the next meeting, your recommendation to you that you filled the vacancy with Appleton. If they say no, then it's already been posted, and you don't lose that time.
We try not to post positions that we don't have a real need for, because, you know, people put a lot, you have seen those applications lately. I don't want to, I don't want to post a position that we don't really have a job for. Some systems do that, they just like, in May, they say, you know.
So was it the same person that applied, wanted to go over for Appleton if there's not a job?
What, what we had said is that, of course, they're going to, you know, recruit widely in the community and so forth, but that we would have some information too to, so that if someone contacts us asking about a position or finds out about a position or knows about a position, that we have a way to give that information to people who might be interested in the job. And I'm not sure exactly how they've done that in other systems, but they have, you know, worked with the school system and the community about those openings.
So we're back to it not being a delay then?
I, I think there would be a delay unless we just went ahead and posted the job. I wouldn't want to post jobs that we're not going to hire for inside the system, I guess. They have to apply with them if they're their employees and go through their training and so forth, and then if, if they become someone that works in our school system, then they would do whatever else on top of that that we require, but they would not be our employee.
Ms. Tom?
So when we initially, when we go into the initial contract, we're going to list what positions we're hoping to use it for, correct? And they will be specific, I mean, if that's the way we want to put it.
The difference between when I first introduced this and now is I had specific vacancies then. So now, what I'll do, if I, if I continue with this recommendation, is I would list all of the possible positions, we would even consider this as an option. And again, it would be, basically, it would be if there becomes a vacancy, these are the positions where we would save money and think it would make reasonable sense to consider whether or not we want to hire internally or whether we want to use an Appleton employee. And it could go either way with a specific position, but it would be kind of a comprehensive, pretty short list of what those positions could be. That's the best.
That's basically when we had started with any discussion, that's basically how you pitched it anyway.
That's the way, that's the way it would be, I was just aiming to tell y'all at that point in time what specifically was.
But there were still some open-ended things, like someone moving into the system that had a special needs child that needed a specific.
Right, unknown, unknown positions that needed, right.
So if that was listed and, and, you know, it's out there in the open, we know that that's, that if that person comes in and hires somebody, that you're just going to have to take care of that. But if there's something different from that list, could we, could we vote to put it out there? That's, that's, that's the concern.
That list is going to be in the contract, so anything we did to add to change the contract would have to go through a whole other contract, contract renewal, so it would be what's on there. And those positions that you mentioned are, would all be under the category of, when we post those positions, it'll say, we do itinerant, it'll say itinerant instructional assistant that covers positions like you mentioned as well as some others to do.
There would be nothing to keep you from in the contract, this is what I'm asking for, I'm not sure I got the answer to. Just going to do all your vacant, whatever it is, let's just touch the sides if you want to have a position. You just, so great to have a position.
But I think the more specific it is, the less there's room for, I'm not saying that you do this, but you're sneaking, sneaking something through. I know you would not do that, but that's what I, but, you know, if it specifically says, you know, there may be a need for an itinerant special instructional assistant, special, or a Title I teacher or assistant, I mean, all of those will be listed out, correct? That's your intention?
Absolutely. What I would say too is, I would never, I was transparent.
I know, I know, I'm just, I'm just.
But if there were the least bit of concern of any board member of that, we would have bigger problems.
But it's not, but it's not about you and us, it's about the contract, right? I mean, it's basically, it's, it's not your personality or you, or whether we trust you or not, it's about what we have to answer to, to, to our public school system.
Well, the contract will be very specific about which positions could be utilized, you know.
And that's all, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
And so then, when you send that requisition to Appleton, would it not be allowable to also just say, send that requisition to the board members and say, this is what, this is what I'm filling?
Just as an information?
Just as an information.
As, as it.
Yeah, just so that we have, so that someone doesn't call us and say, hey, did you know that there's a, you know, there's an Appleton person coming in to fill this position? Because it, the whole idea is to be open and transparent and, and save money, and also continue allowing you to have flexibility. And I, and I understand and I respect that. But just like Daryl said, you know, when, when we're the ones out there in the community answering these questions at the gas con or at work, we also need to know what, what we're getting, where we're standing. And as time goes on, I'm sure that we just have anything else, the trust will be there from the community as well as our employees and us, board members and the system.
We have a handful of positions that are available right now, and I think this would probably work for, and, and I think that would save us some money. That would be my position of limited basis that we try to. Anyone else have comments or questions before we move on? We're going to move on to job descriptions, item four.